Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's 2000, uh, March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's June 16th, 2021 revised order. This meeting of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted in person and remote. In-person attendance will be limited to Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee members, superintendent, and all district school administration at the district office professional development room, 50 Main Street, second floor stockroom. Knowing first attendance of members of the public will be permitted at this time, however, the meeting may be accessed remotely through Zoom. Agenda items listed are those recently anticipated by the chair, and now all items listed may in fact be discussed. Those items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSP, Berkshire Edge, Berkshire Eagle, our school committee recorder, and will be broadcast once transcribed and approved minutes we've made publicly posted to our website. So just give me one second to get the list of school committee members, which I did not do. Okay, I'm gonna do roll call for attendance. Anne Hutchinson?
Here.
Thank you. Jason St. Peter?
Here.
John Steven?
Do you see him? I do not. I'll send another email to him. He was in our last meeting.
Bonnie Bond with Tony? Molly Thomas?
Here.
Bill Fields?
Here.
Diane Singer? I cannot see Diane. Cory Spray?
Yeah.
Rich DeHoney?
Here.
And I am present. We do have a forum. So let's start off with the minutes of December 8th, 2021, and December 16th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion by Cory, a second by Bill. We discuss. Hearing none. Roll call vote. Anne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And aye. It's unanimous.
And Steve Shawn joined.
This is Diane. I'm here now.
Okay. Great. So we're just voting on the minutes? So how do you vote, Diane?
Yes.
And John?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay, um, I'm gonna share a little teaser, and we'll do a formal update next week, but we've got some good news around two state grants. Um, and at our meeting next, uh, in two weeks, uh, we'll, we'll share the details on that. But it's, it's good. Um, do any of the principals want to share anything about what's going on in the schools now? Okay, somebody does. Let me just recognize you. Do you see who it is?
Yes, Ben.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Ben.
All right, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Uh, just, I didn't have a chance in December to really share this, uh, good news, but we had our student-led conferences on the half day and the evening before that in December. They went really well. Um, we sent out surveys to faculty, staff, uh, families and students. Um, and, uh, families were really, uh, in a really major way, really happy and impressed with the student-led conferences. At this point, 98% of our students participated in a student-led conference, which is very different from our 40% participation with parent-teacher conferences. Um, our families were able to, uh, see what their students were working on in school, what their pride was, areas of trouble, and also goals. There was a lot of positive feedback from the families. The students, of course, uh, did not enjoy the process because they were, uh, basically required to present, um, all of their, uh, pieces and not stay at home during student, you know, parent-teacher conferences. I, I say that in tongue-in-cheek. Students actually in general really enjoyed them and felt really supported by them, but of course, it is another, another chore for them. But, uh, really a lot of kudos to the crew program for preparing them and to the teachers, the classes, preparing the kids. Um, it was really just cool. The kids got to, I participated in several of the student-led conferences, as did Miles. And each, uh, crew leader had their 10 to 12 rugby, uh, present, uh, their work, uh, talk about, uh, who they are as a learner, and then answered questions, uh, from, from the family. It just was a really, really wonderful experience. And I'm really proud of the fact that we had almost universal participation, and we're still even, uh, trickling in with a few in January to, to make up. We should probably be close to 100% participation. So I'm just really proud of our faculty and really of our students for really stepping in uh, to this experience.
Great. Thank you, Ben. Uh, Katie?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, so just a couple things to share. Um, next week, we, um, have a visitor. Jill Fleming from Burke Cirque is coming to, uh, do, uh, about eight hours of work. She's gonna go in and out of classrooms. Um, she's gonna be doing some movement and breathing exercises, um, to teach kids some things they can do at their workspace, um, to cope with stressors and uncertainty. So, um, that should be interesting. We are filling up our Stoke-Muddybrook, uh, Parent Guardian interview schedule, uh, for next week. Um, I would encourage anyone, uh, to, uh, if you know families, especially of ELL, students with disabilities, students of color, or, uh, LGBTQ students, um, if they could, uh, make their voices heard, that would be great. I'm gonna be sending out the link, uh, once again in the wag tomorrow. Um, and we do have America hopefully gonna help us reach out to some families as well. Um, we are also holding a third and fourth grade focus group, um, to gather some input from the kids, which should be interesting, uh, hopefully during the week of the 24th. That's it from Muddybrook.
Christie?
Hi, everyone. Uh, I'd just like to give an update on all of the crazy changes that we are, um, experiencing at the high school on a daily basis, and thank, uh, all of the staff and parents and students for their continued flexibility during this, uh, very challenging time. Uh, sports schedules are changing on a daily basis, and I just want to appreciate Carl for all the work he's doing scheduling, rescheduling, rescheduling. I want to appreciate the coaches for supporting the students, uh, through this difficult time. Uh, our winter concert is scheduled for next Wednesday, and we are planning to still allow two guests per student, but because we have to restrict attendance, um, Paul Kately actually is working with CTSP to livestream the winter concert, so I'm excited about that. Um, our advanced drama performances were actually slated for tonight and tomorrow night, but because of illness, they've also been postponed. Um, attendance there will also be limited, but we are trying our best to make sure that things are going on for students as they are supposed to. Um, and I just, again, want to thank everyone for their continued patience as we navigate, uh, the circumstances on the ground.
Okay. Um, thank you. Um, John, if you're there and, and want to take a minute to tell people about the grant, I think we could squeeze it in.
I'm sorry, Peter, couldn't you?
No, I'm inviting John Bruno to, to tell us a little bit about the grant.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, uh, we just found out today that, uh, proposal that we put forward for SEL and mental health grant was approved. So that's $360,000, um, that we're gonna use to, uh, work on pilot and universal mental health screening as well as, excuse me, continue developing our multi-tiered system of social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health, um, and wellbeing support. Sorry, forgot, forgot the support part there. Um, and then there's a third part that's, um, sustainability through community-based coordination across, um, and access to services, and we're you, we're doing that part in conjunction with collaborative care. So this is really cool. It's moving forward a lot of the work that we've been doing over the last couple of years, and it's great to have this money to move forward. I also found out, um, recently that we, another grant that I applied for, it's more of a program, you know, the money is not, um, determined yet, but we're also, we're, our proposal for a new ELE program, which is for English language learners, uh, specifically our newcomers, and our SLIF students has been approved, and we don't know the details of that yet, but that's great news as well. That'll help us build our, uh, newcomers program.
Okay, so just to restate that, because it, it got a little, uh, muddled, um, the, uh, the SCL Wellness Grant is a $260,000 grant. So, uh, a really great deal, and, and thanks to John and, and the team of people, uh, that helped him, uh, submitting and, and getting, getting that grant. Cool. Uh, let's move on now to, uh, student member items. Julia, what have you got?
I'll, I'll keep it quick. I'll see if I can beat my record from the last meeting. Um, last week, as we returned from break, COVID was absolutely brutal. Um, it, it was taking people out left and right. People were dropping like flies. Um, but I think, hopefully, knock on wood, that we can say that in a few months, we'll say that last week was probably the worst of it, um, and then hopefully we are on the other side of it. Uh, but COVID testing was the absolute key. There, there really wasn't anything else that got us through that, um, and it's just a testament to that, um, and, and how thankful we are to have it. Uh, tests were, were sparse throughout the county and the nation, but for all of us to be able to come back from break and know that we had a PCR test through the school was a really, really amazing thing. Uh, as Mrs. Farina mentioned, athletics continue, uh, and that's a really great thing. With pandemic, that's, I think, one of the biggest things that students need in addition to school, is just having that opportunity outside of school. Um, Stoke continues to work really hard with students, working with faculty, working with administration, uh, but most importantly, working with student groups on organizing and, and continuing through the pandemic, uh, and making sort of the, the student voice heard. Um, the Student Advocacy Board, which Mrs. Farina set up, which is sort of an advisory to the principals, working really hard to continue communication throughout the school. That's a difficulty no matter what. Um, they're implementing the new system and app for the district, so that will streamline communication. Um, we talked about that before. And then next week ends the quarter. So this is halfway through the school year. Midterms are happening, and final assessments are happening, so it's a stressful time, but it'll be good. Yeah.
Great. Thanks. Um, so the, the next thing on the agenda is a, a request to approve donations, uh, and there are a whole host of them. Uh, we're, we're very blessed as a, a school community to be so supported by the, the community. The, the first one, and I'll read the note with it, um, is, um, a donation in the amount of $5,000, uh, to support the high school music department, um, with a piano. Uh, and, and this is a neat one because, uh, the, the folks who are making this donation were giving this donation to honor the memory of Margaret A. Dempsey, Monument Class of 73, who was the piano companyist for the chorus, uh, at Monument, and her parents, Lucille R. and William F. Dempsey, who supported her music in many ways, including providing her, uh, with the piano that allowed this donation. So this is from, uh, Sarah, her daughter, and Bill Grubaski, uh, Sarah's husband. So I'm hoping you can approve that. And do you want me to do them all at once?
Let's do them all at once.
Okay. Um, then, uh, uh, one, uh, in the amount of $200 to the Joe Spartan account. Uh, and this is an account that, that lets the high school, uh, fund, uh, particular and pressing needs, and this is from Robert Schaloff and Michelle Schaloff. So that's great. Uh, and then, uh, a donation to the art department, uh, uh, in the amount of $2,500 from Anna Oliver and Stephen Klein. And then two more donations to the Joe Spartan Fund, one from Mary, uh, Marina and Doug Wilbur, uh, and one from, uh, Cole, Cole Lee? I don't know. Cole Lee? I'm not, I'm not totally sure about that one. So, again, I think we really appreciate the support from, from all these folks with, uh, strong ties to the district. A motion to accept?
Motion to accept the donations.
Second motion?
So a motion by Rich, a second by Bill. Any discussion? Other than the fact that we are blessed to live in this community? Uh, roll call vote. Anne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Uh, Molly?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Great. Um, so the next thing on the agenda is the, uh, revised football co-op proposal. I, I know that both Christie and Carl might want to speak to it, and, um, I, I believe Steve Sagran is also in the, um, uh, waiting room, and, and he would like to speak to it as well. So Christie, or, or, we're all permission. So Christie, maybe you frame it, and then Carl and Steve can speak.
Yes, uh, do you all hear me?
Yes.
Uh, thank you to the school committee for letting us bring this forward again. Um, we, uh, visited this topic in the fall um, for, uh, a co-op with Waldorf joining, um, our already co-op football team. Um, our football team is the one team at the high school, um, that we really could use additional players. Waldorf reached out in the fall after joining MIAA, um, and requested, uh, us look at our sports and see where we might have opportunities, uh, for their students and for ours. This will help us. Um, we think it's good for the community, uh, to include them, and so I appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward again. Um, Carl can tell us a little bit more about the context of co-op, um, in terms of the MIAA guidelines and the school committee's role in that, and then we'd love to hear from Steve, um, who's with us with a few of his students tonight.
Yeah, the only, uh, the only thing I would add is, um, just some of the things that were mentioned in the, uh, in the doc that was.
Uh, Carl, let me just interrupt you for a second. Your connection or your distance, your microphone is sort of terrible. Um, and we're getting a lot of feedback. Can you do anything to make it better?
Uh, any better now?
Yes, much better.
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, we're following the criteria. Uh, if you look at the doc that was shared, um, one of the points that is made that, um, you know, we're not gonna, we would never cut any Monument Mountain players because we've added Waldorf players. Um, like Christie said, there's definitely a need on the football team. Uh, we're, we have a big senior group that's leading. There's not a large eighth grade group coming up. So I think that also meets the criteria of, of what the MIA is looking for. Um, yeah, I, I don't have too much more to add after that, except it just seems to meet, you know, what, what the MIA is looking for as far as a co-op goes. We've, like we said, we've done it in the past. We've done it with Mount Everett successfully. We're just trying to add one more, uh, guest school.
Okay, so I, I think it makes sense to have, uh, Steve and his students speak a little, if, if they'd like to share something.
Thanks, Peter. Are you aware, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thanks. Um, are any of the students on the Zoom call, uh, in addition to me that you're aware of? Because they're not here with me personally.
No, no, that's okay. Uh, it, it, tell me who their name, is Gabe Lasser one?
Yes, Gabe is probably the one who's on. So, um, I'll just say that, um, I, we, we approach this as.
I'm here.
Okay, that's good, Gabe. Steve, we lost you a little bit.
Okay. Just want to say, thanks for including us in this meeting, and, um, you know, with regard to jazz band, um, Spanish and math courses, and improv group, we've been cooperative with Monument. We've included Monument Kids on our improv group for the last few years. Um, we've made videos with Simon's Rock Kids and Monument Kids and our kids, and we joined the MIAA specifically to open up this as a possibility. I feel like we're one community, and, um, all we have is a few kids who would like an opportunity to try out.
That's great. Gabe, do you want to add to that?
Uh, yeah, I have played, uh, at Monument with some of the, uh, people that would be on the football team, uh, for baseball, not, not with Monument, but in other leagues, like Babe Ruth for baseball. So it'd be cool to be able to play on the football team with some people that I know.
Hey, thanks, man. So for the school committee, do, discussion or a motion? Well, let's try a motion. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a, this is Diane.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we include, uh, the Waldorf School in our football program as part of a co-op program.
Well, I have a second.
Second.
Second from Cory, a motion by Diane. Discussion.
Um, I'd just like to say that I think it's part, if we're thinking about being an inclusive community, it's important that we include everybody. It's important that we make opportunities for students who want to join us. I think the more that we can open our school, the better it is for our students and for our community. A lot of the parents at the Waldorf School and at the other schools that are in our towns also pay taxes, and they pay taxes for our school. A lot of those kids also have brothers and sisters that go to Monument and to Muddybrook and to DuBois. These are also kids who play in the leagues, the Berkshire Soccer Leagues and the Football League and the Baseball Leagues with the kids when they're younger, with the kids who go to our schools. I just think that this is a great opportunity for us to be more inclusive in our community and also do a great thing for the kids who want to be part of our program.
Thank you, Diane. Anyone else?
Um, I'd like to say that, um, after a couple of weeks of thinking about this and hearing from my, uh, granddaughters who attend Monument, um, castigating me for my vote last time and telling me that it was unfair and that they saw no reason why a very small group of kids couldn't play football, and as one of them said, "God knows the football team needs players." So I have thought about this. I think I like what was sent, and I like the ground rules. Um, I think that I'm going to, um, support this at this time. I, I have some reservations about what it can lead to, which I have stated earlier. Um, Carl disagreed with my comparison, but I think that at this point, with this particular program and with this particular school, it would behoove us to, to cooperate, and I see some academic aspects here where our kids might be able to take part in some of their seminars and vice versa.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Hearing no one, we'll vote. Anne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yeah.
Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
No.
And aye. It passes. Thank you very much for joining with us tonight.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Steve and Gabe. Um, so, uh, the next thing is to set the public hearing date, and Sharon can weigh in on this. This, this is a formal thing we do all the time. I believe, um, and, and let me just try to, to.
Yeah, I'm starting to find the date.
I believe we, we're recommending the 17th of February.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion to set February 17th, 2022? Is there a public hearing on the budget?
Motion to set the public, statutory public hearing for February 17th for the FY '23 budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion by Rich, and this time I'll give the second to Jason. Thank you, Cory, for the election. Any discussions? Hearing none? Uh, let's vote. Anne?
Yes.
Jason?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Oh. Yes.
Diane?
Yeah.
Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
No, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Um, the, the next thing on the agenda is, um, what's in your packet, the career vocational technical education application, and this came out of, um, a lot of work at the, at the high school. And, and as you, you look at it, um, uh, i- it's a process for students to apply to formally be part of our, one of our currently two Chapter 74 or state-approved vocational programs. Uh, one's in automotive and one's in, uh, horticulture. Um, and, and this is an important thing uh, for, uh, a number of reasons. Uh, a- and then, uh, in, in addition to those two, there are also our, our non-Chapter 74 programs, so early childhood, business technology, woodworking technology, and computer technology, and then the two innovative career pathways we've been working on, advanced manufacturing and engineering, and medical care. So this is us offering a wider range of options, uh, setting up better structures to do it, and, and in the, um, immediate future with the two approved programs, this lets us charge, um, sending districts the full cost of, of that education. So right now, we, and the rate's set by the state, but for a choice student, we're getting $5,000 for, um, uh, tuition student based on the various agreements, it's a little more than 10. And the vocational rate for the two approv, approved programs, uh, is, is above $18,000. Um, so this is important for a whole host of reasons, but one of them is that it'll, it'll, over time, generate additional resources, uh, to support high-quality work. I also want, Christie's on the call. I also want to, uh, have her speak to this. Christie?
Hi, Diane, everyone.
Yeah.
Hello. Um, so the reason we're bringing the application forward to you all now is, um, uh, the Perkins, Perkins has been redone at the federal level, and we are now at Perkins Five. And one of the requirements in Perkins Five is that we have a formal application process. At Monument, we have not needed a formal op, application process to this point because, um, our programs have been able to enroll all students who are interested. Um, they're not competitive to the point where we have to exclude anyone from the program. Um, as we continue our work with CVTE, um, especially with our two new pathways, uh, we envision a time where it might be possible that we actually don't have as many seats as we have students interested in the programs, and when we get to that point, it's critical that we have an application process. So we need to, um, have this application approved so that when we reach that point in our programming, um, we have a process for how students are selected. Um, Peter also highlighted our, our future goal of, um, charging school choice students. We are not there yet, but this is a piece of preparation to move us in that direction. We are not there yet, but this is a piece of preparation to move us in that direction.
Any questions or comments?
So what's the timing on getting to changing the funding scheme?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that because previously we had been told that we need to box-certify programs in order to charge it. Am I incorrect on that? I don't believe that is true. I think we could charge for the programs that are certified. Part of what we're doing, though, before we start charging is to better define the course, the sequence of study.
So yes, in addition, I'm just gonna add...
Hold on.
So is next year a possibility?
Kristy or Peter, is next year a possibility?
No. One of the pieces that we still have to do is meet the hourly requirements for those programs. If we start charging and we aren't actually scheduling students for the 950 hours, I think that's going to create more problems than we will be ready for. It's actually part of why, in my proposal for the budget next year, I've requested the CVTE administrator because to move us in that direction, where we're meeting every single requirement for these programs so we can charge, I think that that's a piece that we need in place. So my hope is, the year after, we're going to be prepared to do that.
That's great. Cory?
I have two questions about messaging. Is the application being rolled out so everyone will start to do it? Because the way it's written now is saying just that in the event that a course is oversubscribed, students will complete the attached application.
Correct. So we were piloting the use of the application with our two Chapter 74 programs and our two innovative pathway programs. But because the programs are not at the point where they're competitive, we're really just piloting its use. Any student who fills it out is going to be accepted into the program. We don't, we're not at a point where we have to deny anybody access, so.
And then the reason that the non-Chapter 74 and innovative pathways are not on that front page? It's not automotive and horticulture, same reason.
So Perkins requires us, the state requires us to have the application for our Chapter 74 programs, not for the other programs. But we think it's in our best interest to use the same application for all of our CTE programs. Could have created two different documents, but we thought it just made sense to use the same the same application for all programs.
I agree. I guess I'm just wondering, should all programs just be listed on that front sheet?
Cory, you're really talking about formatting there.
Yeah, it's just a messaging thing. It's confusing to me to only have the two programs listed on the front of the application in the first bullet and then have all the other ones on the back page.
I think part of the reason they're singled out, Cory, is when we moved to a point where we would be charging other districts, it's only those first two that would bring in the additional funding, not the others.
But we'll look at it some more. I think there's the possibility to, I think there's common ground on what you're both saying. Anyone else? A motion to approve the CVTE admissions application?
So moved.
So Molly?
Yeah.
So I have a motion by Rich, a second by Molly. Any discussion? Roll call. Anne?
Yes.
Jason?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Phil?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And aye, it's unanimous. Great, thank you. So the last thing on my part of the agenda is just a brief update on where we are with COVID-19. As Julian shared, the numbers have grown exponentially. The case rate for 100,000 is now, over the course of a week, for the counties above 1,600. And the infection rate is the mid-12s to 15%. So we're seeing a lot of this. We're seeing it particularly in the high school where there've been a lot of cases, and we're seeing cases with staff. And then what's confusing is there's also a stomach bug going around with parallel symptoms. So people are being smart and deliberate about not coming to school. And they have symptoms that present like COVID, but they end up not being COVID. And then there are lots of people that potentially have COVID and are effectively asymptomatic. So it's a challenging and confusing time. In particular, everybody's working really hard around this, and I appreciate it. But I'd like to give a real shout out to the nurses. They're really working around the clock on this. And particularly because some of the pool testing data is coming later and at weird hours, they're working through the weekends often to reach out to families and parents. And from a community perspective, the state shifted some, and there's a lot less formal contact tracing than there has been. So more of that is falling on them. So that's one piece of it. The other thing is, in your packet, there's a letter from the Great Barrington Board of Health in response to our letter asking them to support a vaccine mandate. And I'll just read their recommendation. "The Board of Health recommends that parents, if not already having done so, immediately seek education and advice from medical professionals in order to determine their child's health risks and the most appropriate course of action. With COVID-19 surging in our community, we urge parents of school-aged children to consider this matter as soon as possible. The Board of Health recognizes the importance of informed consent in regards to preventative measures. It is important that parents of school-aged children understand the risks and benefits of vaccination. Understanding treatment options after infection may help with the ability to make a decision without compulsion. The Board of Health emphasizes the importance of continued efforts to implement public health measures such as social distancing, staying home when sick, proper mask usage, and frequent hand washing. In conclusion, the Board of Health recommends that parents and legal guardians make a decision regarding the COVID-19 vaccination as soon as possible. This recommendation is in line with the goals of the Great Barrington Board of Health." And they approve this three to zero. Questions, comments?
Very disappointing.
Thank you, Sean. Erica Milkie?
Hi, everyone. Erica Milkie, I don't remember which meetings I have to say what for. I live in Great Barrington, East Street. I go to all Steve's meetings. I was present at that Board of Health meeting, and it was shocking, to say the least. See, I just had never been to one, and I had no idea how much it was almost solely an elected body. I was very appreciative of the medical professionals that were on there. But the person, the chair of the meeting, seemed to be very skeptical, possibly of all vaccines, and had very little factual knowledge about COVID. It was very upsetting and disappointing. And it was eye-opening to see how, other ways that as community members, we have to hold publicly-elected officials accountable. I also really want to thank the school committee members who were on that call because, except for a few times when Dr. Chang was kind of allowed to speak by the chair, it felt like often the school committee members and Peter were the voices of science in the room. And I didn't, I just didn't expect that on a Board of Health meeting. So I just wanted to thank the school committee. I really appreciated you guys at that meeting. And it was really heartening that those are the folks that are making decisions for my town's health. I guess that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else before we move on?
I'd like to ask that we do everything we can to get vaccine clinics done at DuBois again. Our 12- to 15-year-olds are all due now for their booster. And they are, it's very, very hard to make appointments to get those vaccines, especially not, you know, where you don't have to take your kids out of school to do it.
So Anne, I agree 100% with you. Just a plug for Fairview, they are doing clinics on Saturday mornings for up to 100 people. And you can register for that and just call the hospital and register. I would like to see it back at DuBois, but it means nothing. If you're due for a booster shot, don't wait. Call up and make the appointment. It's a pretty quick process there. And I just checked on this today. I think for Saturday, there are still 40 spots available. So one way, I think we make an argument to have another clinic at DuBois is to fill those 40 spots Saturday and demonstrate that there's a need in our schools and community to do so. So I'll get a message out to parents tomorrow. And I hope that we can host one or more clinics in the near future. That would be wonderful. Anyone else? Moving ahead, you're all seated?
I'm all seated.
Policy Subcommittee met this evening. At the next meeting, you'll get first meetings on four policies, and there'll be more information on that. Jason, buildings and grounds?
Have not met.
Superintendent's evaluation?
Has not met.
Thank you. Technology has not met. Rich, finance?
We were scheduled to meet before today's meeting. We decided to continue that meeting out because we're really just in a holding pattern now, waiting for the governor's proposed budget and other revenue and expenditure sources. So I think we scheduled for two weeks ahead before the next meeting.
Thank you. The only thing that's not on here is negotiations. And we were going to meet. I know with the regional school district planning board, we have like three meetings a week. So we were going to meet and talk about starting salaries. So I don't know when. But maybe we can find a time to meet for 45 minutes or an hour and move that along. I had forgotten about it till just now. Personnel, personnel report? Do you have anything?
No, I think it's fairly straightforward and self-explanatory.
Any old or new business before the board? Any public comment? Just raise your hand. Say no public comment. Just want to give it another second. By unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.